Okay.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of the 298 Board of Education for March. Before we begin, we need to go down to number five on your agenda and add item 5A, early release for track meets. We need some approval there, so we will take care of that then. If you've had a chance to look over the agenda, there are no other changes, so.
I'm going to leave the agenda.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, to adopt the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, delegations have none. If you'll look at your consent agenda, we'll have the minutes of the February 14th meeting, payment of the bills, treasurer's report, clerk's report, rec. commission reports, jury of the woman. And then we need to accept a $1,000 donation from Strategic Farm Solutions LLC for FFA and a $10,000 anonymous donation for the track renovation project, so. For generous people.
Hi, did you move to approve the consent agenda?
All seconded. Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the regular board meeting on February 14th, 2022, payment of the bills, treasurer's report, clerk's report, the Lincoln County Rec. Commission report, and we need to accept a $1,000 donation from Strategic Farm Solutions LLC for the FFA program and a $10,000 anonymous donation for the track renovation project. Thank you to those for donating. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Next, we will have a high school presentation. Are you guys ready or do we get set up?
Well, Renee's coming with us, saying she's not sure. But I can tell you about something else.
Okay.
So.
We can hit the early release if you want to do that first.
Yeah, either one. I mean, I can do this.
Okay.
Sure, let's do early release.
Okay. Okay, we'll jump into 5A. Do you want to go over that or do you want me to read over that list?
Yeah, so last year we released early for the two track meets and the main reason for that was because we need workers. The workers run the field events and our workers are usually our teachers and then some community members, but you can't do it without some of our teachers, especially the junior high meet, which is on April 28th. Is that right? April 28th. And that is because we start that meet early in the day at 1:00. Because you have seventh grade girls, seventh grade boys, eighth grade girls, eighth grade boys, you have four divisions and it just becomes a lot. So we, last year we moved the meet. It used to always start at 3:00 when it was here. Last year we moved it up when we went to Teskeet and then I believe we kind of found a happy meeting. We are starting at 1:00. I think if, that way we can feed the kids and count it as a full day. If, I would like to get out at 12:30 and I will figure out a way to make our teachers and enough people there to watch the kids and get teachers back over there and shuffling of buses will become an issue anyways. So that day I would, I would ask if we could get out at 12:30 and that way we can still count it as a full day, get our kids fed and still have workers for the meet. And then on April, or May 7th, it's a Friday, that's the Thompson Relays. That meet starts at 3:00. We can't start that meet any earlier. That's a catch a rule with high school meets. You can only go to so many that are full days and so that has to stay at 3:00. So that day I would ask that we get out at 2:00 and most of those teachers that are going to go over and work that, they'll go past their contract time, but they just have always helped us pass our contract time and never, never say anything. So that way they can get finished up at 2:00 and then we can head over there.
That work. The 6th, May 6th.
May 6th, sorry. It was last year, Mason.
Okay. Just so everybody gets that. I see people writing, so we'll do that now. Okay. So I need a motion to approve an early release for junior high track, April 28th. Track meet starts at 1:00 PM. We will release students at 12:30. And then on May 6th, high school track, Thompson Relays, we will start at 3:00 PM. Track meet release at 2:00 PM. Just to verify that's district wide. Yes.
Did you say 12:30?
12:30 on the 28th, yeah. And we'll probably ask all staff to help on the junior high one like we did last year. We can't run it probably without everyone helping.
Okay.
And just to note two things about April the 28th. All fourth and fifth graders will be on the field trip that day, which shouldn't matter. I mean.
We've already discussed that.
We've already discussed that. And then if we're going to do 12:30, we would probably then not have morning preschool as well, just to balance that time out.
Okay. No morning preschool.
And I'll go ahead and run the numbers tomorrow, but that should be not a problem to have either morning or PM preschool based on the number of minutes.
That's on the 28th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Try and read that right here. Good motion.
Motion that we let out early on the 28th for junior high track on the 6th.
Okay.
Maybe just in 12:30.
All seconded. Okay. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jason, that we release for high school track meet on May 6th at 2:00 PM and junior high track meet on April 28th at 12:30 PM. On April 28th, there will be no morning or afternoon preschool. And this will be district wide, both LES and Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Both will be dismissed 12:30 on April 28th and 2:00 PM on May 6th. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven oh. Okay. Are you ready for credits and tech center?
Yes. Well, we thought we'd kind of give you an update on where we're at with the tech center from kind of the student's perspective and also just to let the new board members online not be aware of this information, know where we're at. And then also we have a couple of things to bring up with you before we start working on our handbook for this year. Okay, so first of all, if you had any question about funding, the students that are going to the tech school are still considered our students and we do receive full funding for those students, even though they're going to spend at least three hours of their day in the tech center, they're still considered ours. So there's no question about the FTE funding that we receive for the students. We still get full funding. However, the Excel and CTE funding, the classes that fall under that umbrella, if they are taught by a Salina Tech instructor, Salina Tech gets that funding. Okay? Any of the classes that we teach at the high school would still receive that Excel and CTE funding just like we do now. And then our hope by the time we get to the end of this adventure is that we're graduating students that are receiving certificates and credentials and then of course that will increase our post-graduation effective rate, which is something that this state is definitely wanting us to do. One of the things that Salina Tech can do for our students is not just help the tech kids, but also our college bound kids. Just to give you an idea of cost right now, Salina Tech gives a big discounted rate for high school students. They are only $79 a credit hour. The majority of the classes that our kids take are the three credit hour classes. The other two places that most of our kids while they are in high school take classes from are Cloud County and Barton County. Cloud County's 111 a credit hour, Barton County is 118 a credit hour. And then just for fun, I looked up K-State and they are currently $312.50 per credit hour. So that is why if the kids are ready for it and the parents are willing to pay for it, we are certainly pushing and encouraging kids to take college credits while they are in high school because it is just so much more cost effective. We are, in order for a student to earn their associate's degree, there are five general ed. classes that they have to take. Right now, we're going to be able to house three of them. The other two, we are not able to house at this point, but maybe sometime in the future. The technical math is a class that is required for the welding certification and we are going to teach that dual credit with myself being the instructor. And we're going to add psychology a semester and human growth and development a semester. I'm also certified to teach that one. Personal finance and other business classes, Ms. Ferris is able to teach many business classes because she has an MBA. Some of that is going to depend on enrollment and what we are able to do. And then the college level computer applications, Mrs. White is certified to teach that as a dual credit. Kids can take English Comp 1 and 2. They can continue to take classes from Cloud County if they want to, or they can push to Salina Tech, either, either place. Salina Tech does offer 30 transferable classes, so we're certainly going to try to be looking at that for some of our kids because they are cheaper than the Cloud or Barton. Public speaking and college algebra, which is dual credit with Mrs. Boris, will remain with Cloud County at this point because we don't have that as an option for Salina Tech. Okay? So we're really trying to grow what the instructors at Lincoln can teach, so the kids do not have to take them online.
So the five, the five classes would be college algebra or technical math, psychology, computer apps. They only have to take one comp class, though most of our kids will take both of them, and then public speaking. We do have a teacher that is looking at getting their masters in English, so hopefully in the next couple of years we can offer comp in-house. One of the biggest things in my opinion is being able to have a teacher in the building that can teach those, so those kids don't have to take them online. The public speaking one is, is going to be tricky. Since the Higher Learning Commission has changed that you have to have a masters in the actual program or department or whatever, public speaking, when he said basically find a priest, because it, that is that difficult to find someone to teach public speaking. So that might be one kids just never have a choice on.
So. Then when we started trying to look at, okay, what is this going to cost our kids to do these programs? The welding technology program, which as far as we have the enrollment, and I'm sure we're willing to have, is definitely a go with Salina Tech. In order for a student to just get the certification, not the associate's degree, Salina Tech requires 37 credits to do that. Of course, if they want to get their associate's degree with that, we will encourage them to do that and then they have to take the classes to get themselves up to that 60 credits. The thing for me that is really fascinating is that if a student wants to earn the certification over the course of the two years that they take those classes, it's going to cost them less than $1,000. It's going to cost them just to touch over $800. A traditional student, it's over $8,000. And if a student wants to earn their associate's degree and do the 60 credits, it's under $3,000. And I know that sounds like a lot, but if you think about what colleges are costing nowadays, for less than $3,000, they can earn a degree which is worth $10,000 to $15,000. So if, if we have students that are wanting to do that associate's degree, we will get them started on it right away and do everything we can to get them in a position where they can get that. There are a lot of kids that graduate from JuCo on one day, they go to high school the next day. It can be done if kids choose to work that hard. And there are certainly benefits to taking those dual credit classes. The, we do not know yet if they're going to go the automotive route or the diesel route. That is dependent upon Salina Tech and the instructors that they can find. In order to get just the credential, it's 53 credits hour, 53 credit hours. To me, I don't know why kids, why wouldn't they go ahead and do the five extra classes to get their associate's degree? It's not that much more. But again, total cost approximately for a Lincoln High student is going to be about $672. If they want to get their associate's degree, again, it's going to be under $3,000 to get that associate's degree to go with their auto tech. And then diesel is very similar. Diesel actually does require the associate's degree, so they have to take those anyway. They, they may need to go back to Salina Tech year 13, which is the year right after graduation to finish the degree because it is a little bit longer of a program. But again, they can get that for less than $3,000, which to me is simply amazing. When we had our parent meeting last week, Mr. Crenshaw talked to the parents about, you know, if there's a student that is wanting in this program, but they can't afford the tools, we will figure something out. We will come up with some money from somewhere, some grants or something to try to get these kids this, the money to be able to do that. We are still working with Salina Tech on exactly the class route we're going to go. I don't know that year one, we're going to be able to offer all of the credits to get those credentials, but we hope eventually it's going to get there. And another thing that, that we will want to think about would be if there's a student that is entering year one as a senior, year 13, will they need to go to Salina Tech and finish, or would there be a possibility they could finish at, in year two here somehow? Obviously, they would no longer be your student, but something for us to think about and consider for the future for those students that maybe can't get there for something. But there are obviously a lot of really good things going on with Salina Tech. Do you have any questions about any of that? Kind of say you got, they're dealing with the facilities. I'm kind of working at it from the student's perspective.
And one thing to remember about those dual credits is those kids are going to have to take an English class their senior year. They're going to have to take a math class. Most likely those, those kids are going to take a math class their senior year, so it's only logical for them to do it dual credit to get that associate's degree if that's the direction they want to go. And a lot of these kids, if they know that this is the path they're going on, they can start some of those dual credits as a sophomore, you know, take psychology, get it out of the way, or that computer apps class or whatever. But having those teachers in that is going to be so critical for their success.
Has the interest level been pretty high?
Yes, I have about, I don't know, 10 students already enrolled. They've already done the process of enrolling at Salina Tech. And I don't think the non-tech kids completely understand that Salina Tech is an option. Everybody just has to use Cloud County and that's what they are thinking they're going to do. I will meet with them and make sure that they understand they do have options. We have some juniors that have taken several classes already through Cloud County, so they may want to stay with Cloud County for their senior year just for ease of transferring transcripts and everything, but it will really be up to them. But to get a three credit class for $240 is, that's a pretty good deal.
Thursday, we met with Sylvan and Teskeet. We invited Wilson. They had a conflict, but we sent some stuff over and I've been talking to their principal. But they came over and actually saw the building and we discussed the options for them and it sounds like Teskeet already drives to Salina, but they are completely, very interested in just here so they can transport. They have issues with kids not always coming back to school after they've gone down there. And Sylvan showed a lot of interest and I've been talking to the teachers over there and I think this is going to be a great avenue of partnership with those schools and I think we'll fill the program between the three of us or four of us.
You say fill the program. How many do you have? How many could you handle at once?
Well, that's kind of stuff in the air dependent upon the booth. So they thought that we could put in 10 booths. Is that right, Mr. Crenshaw? And two per booth, so potentially 20. That is kind of what they're leaning towards.
Possibly. Probably a good manageable size would be 15 in the morning, 15 in the afternoon. So 30 kids when it starts into year one, year two.
And this first year will be interesting because whether you're a junior or a senior, you're entering year one. And then once, then the following year, the seniors obviously will be in year two and the incoming juniors will be year one. So we'll begin to get a little bit of differences going on there, but this first year, everybody's heading into year one. I know our kids really hope that they do diesel because we have a lot of kids that are interested in diesel.
Yeah. And the, the, your farm kids and the equipment kids and so. So we're going to completely shift gears on you. So if you have any Salina Tech questions?
Before you do that, could you go back to your first slide for a second, please?
This one?
The intro slide. Logo. So Mrs. Lynn is kind of, you know, graphic paw print veteran of years and years. And that is the logo we would like to go with. I want to sit with her and tweak a little bit more. I would like to see that L a little bigger and a little bolder, oversized. But unless there's any objection, we would like to move forward with that being the logo and we can get signs either through Mrs. Nitsch's class with the plasma cutter or through paw print with a vinyl application, but I'd like to get some signage started. What we would do is cut that off. Obviously, it wouldn't be that big tan square. Then below that, have another sign about the same size as Lincoln Technical College that says Salina Technical College. And then if Cloud County would come in with wind farm, we could add another, basically a banner below with what schools. We'll also have the paw print organization put together a sign on the inside for all the people who are supporting and donating that this, this project and facility made possible by. And then on one of the big white walls up there, really put up the shout-outs for the people who have really backed this. We would, I would like to push forward with, you know, get some T-shirts for some kids, get them really excited, kind of keeping the momentum going unless there are conflicts or issues with where we're headed there.
That's actually gray box. He said gray.
Said the lighting.
Okay.
Looks tan.
I would like, we're not doing tan. It didn't print very well. Great. Don't be prejudiced.
Any other questions about the tech center from the students' first section? No? Okay.
You have slides on this?
Yeah.
You do.
I did. Well, I did so I would remember what I wanted to say. Okay, so heading into this school year, and I wasn't here when you guys did this, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but there used to be a speech credit that was required for graduation at half a credit. However, heading into this school year, we do not have a teacher that is certified to teach speech. So it was suspended for this graduation year. That was no longer a requirement. We still do not have anyone that is certified to be a speech teacher. So I, we're asking as we get ready to do, updating our handbooks, what you would like for us to do with that. We are encouraging the kids that are taking college classes to go ahead and take their college speech, college public speaking. I had two students take it first semester and two students that are taking it this semester. The two first semester both got As in the classes and the other two this semester are doing fine. I asked them about it and they said, yeah, it was fine. There's no big deal. I think they have to record themselves giving speeches and then share them some way. So I don't know that is the ideal situation, but it is a class that falls under that umbrella that is transferable to any of the universities in Kansas. So it's still an option if they want to take it for college credit, but I'm just letting you know, we, to add it back in as a graduation requirement, we do not have anyone certified to teach the class.
And to kind of, if you guys remember, I think we had it in April, it was either April or March last year, this, this conversation about suspending it and the conversation was, well, are they still doing speech? We do a lot of the standards or recommendations in speech in other classes. You know, they give speeches in many of our classes, so they're getting that public speaking background, just not the actual full credit.
And even though students don't realize that's what they're doing, we have student-led conferences this week and they're presenting. And even though they're just talking to their parents, they are still having to talk and present.
A lot of seniors are going over tomorrow to Sylvan competing in the youth entrepreneurship challenge. They're going to be giving a speech in front of numerous judges on three different categories. Our FFA program has introduced speech in a whole nother avenue, which is going to give kids another, you know, opportunity to have that public speaking in place.
If we do remove the requirement, it still leaves the 25 credits where that, that's not changing.
They'll pick up an elective.
Couldn't we pick that up? Have the kids take the college speech and we give them credit? Will they get credit now?
They, yes. They, they get it as a dual credit, but it counts as an elective. The, the tricky part about that is it is a class they would have to pay for.
Like we couldn't leave any?
Well, the only.
That gave $333 per student.
And the only other thing to that is like there are requirements to take the college class.
Yes.
And some of our kids won't be there.
Yeah.
And they'll have to enroll at Cloud or wherever.
Yeah. Cloud had, they have certain stipulations. For example, to take college algebra, you have to have a 3.0 or higher or, or a certain score around the ACT. So they do have requirements to take those.
What's a requirement to get certified just a praxis test?
No.
It's beyond the praxis?
Well. For a high school. Oh, yes, there would be a, just a praxis test.
Yes.
Have we asked if anybody's interested in taking a praxis test?
Well, the other part of that is going to be our schedule. Finding a teacher that's available an extra hour of the day is pretty tight. I mean, I'd be more than happy to ask any staff members if they want to. You know, I, I would probably say that the, if we're asking them to teach it, that the district needs to pay for that test. But I'd be happy to ask them. I don't know if.
And it would need to be paired with another semester class. That's the other piece of that is we would have to figure out something that it could be paired with.
Yeah, I'd definitely be happy to ask. I just, I, I don't know if we have a teacher that's interested. I'm not going to say that we don't, but.
And I'm just thinking if, if they got the test taken and they were in maybe another class and work it into another credit, like a, you know, personal finance can be taught for a math credit. I mean, if, if we worked some of those standards into a course, as long as they were certified for that content area, we can make it work a little bit. Just read her all the lines a little.
We'll go back and ask and find out.
Okay. Speaking is important. And I know, and I'm glad we're doing it in other classes, but I think it's.
Speaking is very important, especially if they're reading homes with computers.
That is true.
We'll table that then and go get a little more information.
I'd also check and see 1A district comparable size, who, who offers speech, who requires speech, just for some macro.
And I think we did that last year and I'll go back and see if I can find the information. I'm pretty sure we called a bunch of districts our size and asked, so we'll see if I can find that. The, the second piece.
Yeah, the second piece is the fine arts credit. Currently, our handbook, handbook states that we will accept art, band, vocal, and industrial technology as a fine art credit. Well, we no longer have the class industrial technology. What they were doing in industrial technology, we are now doing in a class called Ag Structures, where they are designing and building things. So we are asking to expand our fine arts credit capability and add that one year of digital media, which is yearbook. And Mrs. White can answer questions about that, but they do design, they take pictures, they design the layout of a yearbook page. That is a requirement for that. Would you like to add anything else to that or?
No. Graphic design, Photoshop.
Graphic design, Photoshop and this kind of thing.
Yeah, Photoshop, all those things. So we would like to be able to add a year of that class as a fine art credit. Obviously, they can still take it all four years. We would like Ag Structures to take the place of industrial technology. And then the other thing, when Mrs. Flynn and I were brainstorming ways to add a fine art credit, we thought, what better fine arts than the play in forensics? So that if a student participates in the play, they could earn point two five of a credit for the play. If they run the play all four years, that would give them their one fine art credit. If they did the play and forensics, they could earn a half a credit per year each time they participated in those activities. So if they did the play and the forensics, the freshman sophomore year, they would be done with their fine art credit.
And then that would be pass fail. There won't be, it wouldn't be a letter grade. You either did it or you didn't. And there would be stipulations on the forensics that you have to go to so many meets or, you know, we could set guidelines with that.
So this would be in line with like, college athletes receiving phys ed credits for going to varsity sport. Are you, are you looking at going that route with athletics as well for PE credits?
No, because we have, we offer freshman PE.
I just-
Yeah. I, I, I don't think we're to that point yet. We have teachers to teach it.
Well, I think it's important that we modify what the handbook says to meet what we're currently offering.
Yes.
I don't think we wanna take anything out of there, obviously, aside from the fact that we don't tell wood shop anymore.
They, they do do wood shop in extra.
Right.
But it's just called different.
It's just called extra. So just modifying the verbiage in the handbook, I think, is a fantastic idea. And I don't see anything wrong really with adding the play in forensics, as long as there's some pretty strict guidelines. Like you have to show up to all the practices and not just, when you think it sounds convenient.
Yeah. And, and whoever directs the play or is coaching forensics, they would determine whether they passed or failed. And we would need to set up those guidelines and then they would be the, the teacher, I guess, on record.
I just know we have some kiddos that by the time they hit high school, they say, I never want to take band or vocal again. And, you know, they have that choice. And so we just want to make sure that we are giving them other avenues to get their fine art credit.
And what about paw print? Have we talked all about adding that into the fine art piece?
We did talk about that for a P a while. The problem with it is not all the kids design.
Yeah.
Some of the kids do the business piece of it, some of the kids do the, the production. And it's not that they don't ever kinda touch it, there's just some that prefer certain avenues more than the other. And I hate to give a fine arts if they didn't truly affirm it.
If all they did was take the shirts and run them through the dryer?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a very important part of that production.
Yes.
But I'm not sure it's worthy of a fine art credit. Any other questions or discussion about that?
Any of these changes would take board action to modify your local control of graduation requirements. So if, if you wanna do anything with this now, it would require a motion. If you wanna table it, it could be tabled, but eventually it will require formal board action as a graduation requirement for two ninety-eight.
I definitely agree with Nate, David, that getting rid of speech, maybe we should look into that a little bit more. Even though they are touching on that topic in a lot of other areas, it is really crucial.
I'm bringing information about next year, about schools our size and if I can find anyone that would even have interest in it.
We can table that piece of this, this slide we should probably act on, which I think is pretty simple. It's just changing the verbiage unless there's anything, has issue with there.
It's changing the industrial technology to add structures and then also adding one year of digital media and whatever your thoughts are on the play in forensics.
For forensics, do they have traditional practices, like after school? I know in the past, we've had a class where some of that was happening during the day. I'm just trying to make sure that it's, they don't go to set meets and they, they spend just a few hours. I'm just trying to process this.
We don't have a class anymore strictly because we don't have a teacher hours available. It's very slim. I know Miranda has met with kids regularly after school. Would you call it a practice? Not in the tradition of an athletic practice where the whole team comes, but she does meet individually and works with kids a lot. And then meets, obviously.
Just trying to think of meeting with a minimum standard of contact hours, like, and this, 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 and this was done. We, we met these standards throughout this process.
Sure. And I, I, I agree to earn the credit, I, or the quarter credit, I think that there needs to be a standard. It's kinda like the play. I think there needs to be a standard, like, you need to come to eighty percent of the practices. Or you need to, you know, be a part and not be, I don't know if you would consider like the lights person to be part of it. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and, and we were just trying to brainstorm other options. We can certainly not offer that since there's not any gray attached with it. And we can just keep the art, band, vocal, change the name of the one, and then add digital media.
I'm not against it. I just, I just wanna make sure that it's got a good matrix for evaluation.
One hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I actually agree with it looking, having just gone through trying to plan four years of credits. It gives them the opportunity to maybe earn some of this outside of the eight hours a day. Which for some kids is probably going to be important.
And I would say the fine arts credit is probably one of the harder ones the kids get.
Yeah.
And since we are a smaller school with not a hundred options, it gets even more difficult. So if you're not musical, you know, it, it just gives, gives a little flexibility and-
I can tell you after semester credit checks, I went through every sophomore, junior, senior transcript and highlighted to make sure they have their fine art credit, so that we can pick them up if, if not. And some, for some kids, it's, it is a little trickier.
It's still important. I mean, it's important, but.
No, as long as there is, you know, you have standards that are met among that group.
Well, I think adding practice time only makes that forensics team stronger anyway. So, I mean, if you're gonna make that obvious of it.
Doesn't have to be full team. I mean, they can have individualized practice.
If you had two hours with each student for every meeting, you know, some sort of, had seven meets and we had fourteen hours of contact prior to each one, then at least you knew.
Right. And I, yeah, I honestly, I, I, we would put that, that to the coach to, to say, they showed up at X amount and the time that they put in.
Be what they would do against in the classroom instructor.
Yeah, same thing. Yeah, attendance, basically.
That's something we can add and possibly evaluate at the end of next year and see how it went. Maybe reevaluate then as. About gotta give it a chance to see how it worked and-
Very large commitments. I've done both and-
Well, I bet it's for forensics meets and those kids put a lot of work in that, wants to do some, be rewarded for.
Well, we've traditionally had a very strong forensics in musical, play, production. So a lot of kids participate in it and I think it's a great way to give them that opportunity for a credit. That's the interest they have versus maybe something else they're not as interested in.
I would note that we change the fine arts credit wording to add Ag Structures, digital media, and then the quarter credit for the play in forensics. With the understanding that we will review it next year considering successful plus.
I'll even check on that.
Okay. Have a motion by Jessica, signed by Gina, to replace wording of industrial technology under fine arts credit to Ag Structures, to add digital media to the fine arts credit, and to also add a quarter credit for each play and participating in forensics for a year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I have a similar note to this. I've, I'd ask to mention, can we have scholars bowl practice of some sort?
Please.
I, I will address that. You're talking to Gina and I, so?
Yeah.
This is a board member raining out money.
Oh, thanks.
I kept thinking, something not being able to figure, I don't know whose it is. I'm sure it's mine.
You dropped it in the bag.
I dropped it, yeah. See, you guys are creating money around there.
Oh, Miranda, I mean, yes. I'm sorry. Can you see if I can?
Are we moving on to number six, E-Rate discussion with Brenda?
Okay, since we have a fairly new board, I'm going to start over with what is E-Rate? So everybody has an understanding of it. E-Rate is a program that is governed by the FCC. It makes telecommunications and internet services more affordable for schools and libraries. It is funded through the Federal Universal Service Fund. And you see that charge on your phone bill when you pay your phone bill, you'll see a certain amount goes to that fund. It is a discount that we get on our telecommunications and internet services. It's based on whether you're rural or urban and free, and your free and reduced percentage. So we qualify for an eighty percent discount. So our internet connectivity, the charges that we have for our WAN that connect our buildings and some of the equipment, we only pay twenty percent for, based on a lot of, okay? There are two categories. Category one is our internet services and our WAN services. Category two is any hardware to get connectivity to those devices. It doesn't pay or, devices do not qualify for the discount. Just the equipment to get it there. So for example, the firewall, the switches, the access points, the cable. Our basic maintenance on E-Rate eligible hardware is also eligible for the discount. Under category two, we have what's called a budget. It's a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per student and then over five years. So you have five years to spend that money. The E-Rate process starts out in the fall, around October, November, winter, winter, where we have to start the process. We have to file what's called a Form 470. And what that is, is that's a request for proposal for E-Rate eligible items. What that does is once that's filed, the vendors can go in and look at any Form 470 file and they have thirty days to bid on those, those items. So we file it, we wait our thirty days. After thirty days, we get our proposals from our vendors and then we have to do what's called a bid evaluation. And that's where we're at right now. And that's what I handed out to you. And I'll go over those with you. Once you've done your evaluation, you have your board meeting, everybody's good with it, then we sign contracts contingent upon E-Rate approval with those vendors that we've chosen. Once you've chosen those vendors, you file what's called a Form 471. And that's the application to receive the discount. And once you do that, it goes through a review process and then you get your funding commitment letter. Once you get your funding commitment letter, then you have to accept it and say, yes, we do want that. And that's a Form 486. On that form, that's where our, we have to indicate that we are compliant with the Children's Internet Protection Act, that we have our filter in place and that we monitor the activities and matters. So that's why we have to have our filter. Then we get our invoices and they either go ahead and discount our bill, the eighty percent. So right now, we're with VIDE with our internet connectivity and our WAN that ties our buildings together. And then we have the kindergarten annex building. When we get that bill, we get billed for twenty percent. Really nice. For our maintenance that we have approved, any of the equipment that we install, we pay that full amount. And then we fill out what's called a bear form and we get, we fill that out and then SLB will deposit that money or E-Rate. We get that money directly from them when they deposit in our account, so then we get our eighty percent off. Okay, on our bid evaluations, Rich and I sat down. For our internet connectivity and our annex building, the kindergarten, those two contracts were up. We only had one vendor propose anything, so VIDE obviously wins that. They are going, right now we're at five hundred min bytes. They've agreed to bump us up to one bid for the same amount of money that we're paying right now. So that'll be at fifteen hundred dollars a month what we're currently paying. And then the kindergarten building stayed the same, and so it'll be the same as the previous contract. Category two, minus, well, this, this year, we replaced the access points at the high school. We, we put in what's called Maraki brand access points and a new Maraki firewall, which allows us to manage it from the cloud. So now we wanna move forward and replace the Lincoln Junior High switches to Maraki switches to kinda go along with that. And then over the next two years, the following two years, work on the grade school switches and access points and try to get everything over to Maraki. It's easier to manage and better performance. So we had two vendors, VIDE and NCS, that proposed or put in proposals. NCS bid for Maraki and Aruba switches, another brand. We prefer to stay with the Maraki. When you do a bid evaluation, you have to come up with criteria. So over here, you'll see the cost of eligibility has to be way more heavily than the prior, prior experience with the district and local vendor. Those are the criteria that we set. So on this proposal, Eagle or VIDE won this proposal based upon our criteria. And with our CAT II budget remaining, we have sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars remaining after last year paying for the access point. The district's responsibility would be twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then the maintenance, again, VIDE and NCS, based on our criteria, VIDE won that proposal. We do a six thousand dollar bid contract with them and that gets us a discount down to a hundred dollars an hour when they work on our E-Rate eligible items. So since we're out of CAT II budget, that would be the district's responsibility. I know that's a lot to, to go over. Do you have any questions? It's just something we have to do every year to get our eighty percent discount. We are, we now use Green Bush as our consultant. So once we're okay with this, then I can just move forward and she can file our Form 471. The tech building is out right now with Form 470, because we did that later, because we didn't purchase the building at the very one, so I'll have to come back with that bill and the proposals for it, so.
Brenda, do you need a formal motion to accept these bids?
Contingent upon E-Rate approval, yes. That's how we've done that in the past.
All right. Take a motion. To approve the E-Rate bids contingent on E-Rate approval. Seconded. Okay, a motion by Jason, seconded by Nate, to approve the E-Rate bids contingent on E-Rate approval that were presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, we have native school staff appreciation activity.
Last year, we did a luncheon for everybody, and there has been discussion in smaller groups about what to do this year. There was some chatter last year about turning it into more of a family day instead of just a lunch in the commons for everybody. And that is what we are just going to start opening the discussion on as we're getting closer to the, into the school year, believe it or not. So options are have it something at the park, have some bounce houses, have some activities, and turn it into a real family appreciation kind of a thing. The luncheon is also an option. I can't remember the menu last year, but...
Chicken and brisket.
That's right. Chicken and brisket, and that was at the high school. So just time to start having that discussion. We need a big day for that as we move forward. Just bringing it to your thoughts.
These are building level discussions with the staff?
This is the board's appreciation.
I agree with that.
What do you mean?
But like asking the staff what they're wanting, is that what you mean? You've been having discussions?
I'm kind of curious. We talked last year possibly about moving it to doing something in the park or an evening thing or something, but it was kind of late and whatever, so we just went with the traditional. And to me, we have to, as a board, decide, okay, we would pursue one or the other. I wouldn't be opposed to asking the staff if they preferred one or the other. Maybe, I don't, I don't know, it's still our appreciation event.
Yeah.
It's possibly good to have their input if they would rather show up to one or the other, so.
I think their input is probably the greatest thing, determining what makes them feel appreciated.
Yes.
It's definitely important. I think also making sure that whatever we do, we're doing and not actually relying on school staff to assist in any way whatsoever. Because we can't sit on a meal and then turn around the kitchen staff and say, "Hey FYI, we planned a meal for you today."
Right, yes. Which is like happening as long as my sister and everybody before her did.
Right.
Basically, the whole work.
Right. For their own appreciation, but I just don't, I feel like whatever we do, we need to be very careful to make sure it's the seven people sitting around us.
And I think that's, that's what we did last year was, I think the board took care of the meal.
Right. Fixed all the food themselves.
That way it didn't get thrown around the kitchen staff.
And there were a lot of positive comments, and the kind of the potluck feel of all board members bringing something in. There were a lot of, it was a recognized change from, hey, kitchen staff, fix a meal and tell them that we appreciate you.
Right.
It was a good change last year.
A concern of mine would be is if we had like a family kind of deals, the time involved or the time it takes for everybody might not be quite as available as...
It would be a commitment outside of school, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, it was just a thought, whether teachers would rather have an evening where they can spend time with some family and do some things and be together as opposed to sitting in the same commons. And possibly we could do a meal somewhere outside of the school and have all the teachers come to. That would be something to throw out there, I guess, if it's...
We'll get something, we'll get something put together and see where the levels of interest lie.
Yeah, I think, I mean, totally kind of know what they would like.
Yes.
What do you say, family get together? Are you talking about staff members' family?
Yes, like if they want to bring a spouse or bring their kids or whatever it is.
But I think it'd be good to offer them, you know, you can do the luncheon style, like it's been done in the past. And they might prefer that because it's during the day and they're not...
They're already there, it's hard, yes.
Something in the park on a weekend or an evening. Maybe give them the three options and say, because I want to make sure you're happy.
I might even suggest throwing out breakfast, like the back to school, just because checkout can be so, like trying to get times with, I don't know for you guys if it's hard with the lunch there and people, but if you had the breakfast and then, you know, you're working on your checkout process, it kind of cleans that up for everybody and stuff, so.
We could include that, because I think we're in a situation now we could have a very significant non-compliant breakfast.
What?
Not a, not a, you know, whole grain, whole everything. We could have a real biscuit with gravy and a non, what I call non-compliant.
Lots of flat bacon.
Okay.
Mostly, it's so...
Right, right? So that'll give us another option to put out there.
Okay, options are good? We will bring that back next month, with maybe we'll have an idea what the teachers are looking for then.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. Retirement reception approval.
Every year, we have a retirement reception over at the Finch. And we have selected May 20, Friday, May 20, from two to four. And the tradition has been that the board approves this and we buy food and we buy things. I must tell you this, the budget is within my spending authority, so you don't technically need to approve this, but you certainly need to be informed of this. You know, it's, it's not a over $10,000 event. But we definitely want it on everybody's calendar so everybody can attend.
We want a motion to purchase gifts and food for the retirement reception.
If you would like to continue with that tradition, that would be fine.
So we'll continue.
Okay. One second. Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Jason, to go forward with the retirement reception, May 20th from two to four, and to give the office the ability to purchase the gifts and food and rent place for the event. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven oh. Next, we have principal reports. We have those in your packet. Do you have any you would like to add?
I forgot what I wrote.
I know, I do that, I want to. I would just quickly add in, first of all, I want to apologize for running late. I had my parent advisory council, which is our former site council meeting tonight. We ran a little long, we had some great discussions, so I'll come on to explain that. Just for everybody out there, we start our book fair tomorrow from four to eight, Wednesday from 2:30 to 5:30, and then Thursday from four to eight. That, the book fair proceeds fund the majority of new books that are brought into our library as well as equipment. So I would encourage everyone to come out and support that. And there is books not just for young children, for older readers. There's books for every age level, and you can also order online. So it's a wonderful program, and Mrs. Brenneman has worked tirelessly, tirelessly to get it up and running this year, so we didn't get to do it last year.
Just to add, junior high, we have, in junior high, I just think this is a great number. We have 77 kids in our junior high, six through eight. And we have, I was told over 60, but then the other day I was told 64 kids out for track out of the 77, which I think is amazing. Basketball just ended, so I don't have all the high school numbers yet, so those teams just got done. But I thought for junior high, that's pretty awesome, though we have many kids involved in activities right now. Also, just want to, and I have it in here, is the Rudd scholarship of Alyssa, winning that. I think that's just one amazing accomplishment for her and all the work. I can't think of a kid that's more deserving than she is and all the hard work she's put in for the last four years. And also just kudos to her teachers, and what she was able to accomplish at 298 is quite remarkable and great for our school. So also, our seniors are competing tomorrow in the youth entrepreneurship challenge at Sylvan in Lincoln County, so hopefully we can, some of those kids can bring home some cash. Excited for them. They've been working very, very hard for the last months and a half on their project.
Thank you guys.
I just have a couple of things. On my side of the tech center, I just wanted to give you an update. The plans have been drawn and sent to an architect and also to an engineer to work on fire codes. The architect will have to code out the building and then send it to the state fire marshal to see if we need to do anything to modify that building. The engineer is looking at the air evac system for the welders and the heated fresh air returns so that we're not just sucking the heat all out of the building. And also, I had a very excellent meeting Friday with the president of Land Pride in Salina and spent a couple of hours there. I'm still out trying to gather support, because as you know, we're still short finances. As grateful as we are, we didn't get all the finances that we needed, so I'm still out working on that. So that's an update on that. The other thing, you may have seen on social media that Dr. Dean O'Horst was here Friday, and I wasn't able to attend, because the president of Land Pride has a pretty tight schedule, and that was the only time he could see me. But Dean, Dr. Dean O'Horst was here, state board of education member, presenting the challenge award. And I would say this, not to our district, this reward is a direct reflection of our staff. This is staff, this is student achievement by staff. And I think that that, it's very important that we make that distinction. We are in that category of declining enrollment, high at-risk population, and yet we still perform well. And, and that is not something that we take heart for. That is, that is the boots-on-the-ground staff, so very pleased with that award. Last thing I want to do is really talk about bullying and how our district handles that. Since I have been here, this has been an ongoing issue. It, it kind of ebbs and flows and rears its ugly head again. And I think it's very important that the board understands how we address bullying and that the community as a whole understand how we address bullying, concerns and information about bullying. And I think probably the best thing to say right off of the bat is, we take it very seriously. These issues do not go unaddressed. Those of us that have been in this game for a while have seen the effects of allowing that behavior. We've lost students because of that behavior that pushes them over the edge. So this is nothing that is trivial to anybody, staff, administrators, or anything else. But that being said, I think it's very important that we understand. And I'm going to read you our definition of bullying in our policy handbook. Bullying is defined as any intentional gesture or any intentional written, verbal, physical, or cyber act that is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive that creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment, placing a student or staff member in a reasonable fear of harm. A lot of times when you go to bully seminars and things like that, they will say this. Bullying is, is an imbalance of power. Someone is assuming or taking power over somebody else, and it's repetitive in nature. Those are the two keys that they always tie in with bullying. It's an imbalance of power, and it's repetitive. There is a misconception that name-calling or other single incidents are bullying. They may be inappropriate behavior, but bullying is not your shoes are ugly or you dress funny. It, it is typically that imbalance of power, repetitive, safety-fearing situation. We don't tolerate any of it, but I think it's very important to understand the difference between the two. We cannot keep students from speaking. We can prevent them from bullying. And Mrs. Flynn and I have had many conversations of where the line needs to be drawn in the sand. And that student is not allowed to attend our school if they cross that line repeatedly. The safety of other students is more important than that student's ability to attend. So I want to assure you that when we hear about this, that behavior is addressed by administration every single time. Another misperception is because we don't inform the parent of the offended student, there can be a thought that nothing's been done. We cannot discuss discipline or action taken with anyone other than the, the parent or guardian of that student. It is, it is not our opinion, it is not our thought. It is federal law for student privacy under FERPA, that we can't have those discussions. So the assumption that we're not doing anything is just that it is an assumption. But I think my administrators would say, I've been very clear on my expectations for bullying. The other thing that is very important to understand is we cannot act on information that we do not have. So if we don't know of a situation, if it is not reported to administrators or school counselors, there is nothing we can do without information. And the, the fine line that we walk is, you have to be very careful that you investigate, that you interview, that you make the right decision, because we don't want this to turn into, you know what, I'm going to get Jason expelled, so I'm going to say Jason's been bullying me for three weeks. That is as wrong as not addressing bullying. So there is a process. It's not, this claim has been made, this disciplinary action will be taken. I wish it were that easy, but it's not. The other thing that I think is very important for everybody to understand, we do not respond to social media posts. We do not respond to third-party information unless we feel there's cause to respond to it. We do not suspend students based on student accusations without a thorough investigation. And I think it's just important that everybody understands how we look at this, that we, we truly believe that we deal with it. We do not believe in our heart that there is an incredible bullying issue in USD 298. We do not believe in our heart that there is an incredible bullying issue in USD 298. Is there incidents of name-calling? It's, you know, I raised six girls, four of my own. One of my stepdaughters was with us through high school, not so much raising the other one. In a high school and junior high setting, there is always something going on. There's just a constant ebb and flow of behaviors. It does not all escalate to bullying. We have counselors, we have Central Kansas Menon Health, we have a lot of people who are dealing with students all the time on growing up, on resilience, building resilience, but we do not allow bullying. We try to teach kids how to manage things that aren't bullying, and we intervene into things that are. So, I just thought it would be important to review that so that everybody understood. And you have information to share if somebody reaches out to you, how I view it and how I expect our admin to view that situation. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Brings us to executive session for negotiations. We need five minutes. Eight, 11, we'll do it at 8:12. Get everything done. Nice move. Okay. Thank you, David.
Second.
Thank you, Gina. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that the USD 298 Board of Education go into executive session at 8:12 PM for five minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing matters related to employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representative or representatives of the body or agency, and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at 8:17 PM in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the district's right to its negotiating position and the public position under comma exception. All in favor? Opposed? Seven.